Good evening and welcome. We're going to call this meeting of the Akron Public Schools Board of Education for October 22, 2018, to order. Roll call please. Mr. Alexander.
President.
This is Baylor.
Here.
Mr. Braba.
Here.
This is Lasher.
Here.
This is Mansfield.
Here.
Reverend Walker.
Present.
All right. Joining us tonight for the Pledge of Allegiance to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance is Hanson Bittner from the I Promise School, our newest Akron school. Hanson is in Mrs. Arnett's 4th grade class at the I Promise School. He enjoys science the most because he can do experiments in class. Since coming to the I Promise School, Hanson was selected as Student of the Month in September for displaying perseverance. He never stops trying and is always striving to make good choices. Hanson plays Kenmore youth football and played basketball for the Kenmore Knicks. He loves to play video games and listen to music. He has two brothers, Harley and Halakai. Awesome. All right, Hanson, you want to join me up here and kick us off with the Pledge of Allegiance?
Go ahead.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Hanson has prepared a couple of remarks, so we're going to let him have the floor. Go ahead, what would you like to say?
I am a good partner at school when I play football at recess with Maddie. I also have to communicate with the quarterback when I play football with the quarterback. What does being a successful partner mean to you?
I know that you brought some very special people with you today. There are some people here supporting you, so do you want to point out who you brought with you?
Uh, my mom and my brother.
Principal and your music teacher.
Oh, Ms. Arnett.
Thank you very much. You've done a great work. Oh, yes, absolutely. One more. One more. These are rocks, huh?
Yay!
Nice job, buddy. Thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
I think in seven years on the board, Hanson might be the first person to actually pose a challenge to us about what it means to be a successful partner. All right. Let me think in order here. I do want to just recognize one of our former colleagues and an Akron City Councilwoman at large, Ms. Veronica Sims, has joined us. And aside from the fact that this is her second meeting, joining us maybe what, this month or in the last couple of weeks? We've been blessed by your presence. I also wanted to say thank you. These are not obviously the proclamations, but these are copies of the proclamations that Ms. Veronica Sims managed to get from the city to present to two of our students that we recognized at our last board meeting. I was told they were extremely well-done proclamations. They looked very nice, and our students really appreciated that. So, thank you for helping to recognize our students. That was amazing. And I believe you guys recognized them as well when you issued the proclamations, correct? Good. Well, thank you very much for that. Let me see what else I have left. Okay. Community and school reflection.
I could start off. I attended the Project Red Hat Achieving Fame Celebration Gala, which was an outstanding event, well-attended. The recipients were outstanding individuals who, in their own right, have done excellent, excellent work. The comedian, he wasn't a comedian, the other persons who were recognized for their outstanding work, especially for obesity and those things that changed lives. And, of course, they were in a totally different venue this time, but it worked well, and they did an outstanding job. Jackie Sidus Butler and the president, Sister Pamela Valentine, and others need to be commended for all the work that they did to make sure that that was a wonderful evening. And then we had our partnership with Stark State College and the Akron Public Schools, with Kenmore Garfield. And again, that was another continuation of this wonderful partnership that began with Akron U and now continues with Stark State. And to see all of the partnership, the partners who were involved, and then to see our young people, the ambassadors, dressed in their blazers, but their excitement. And then they have a leading part in every one of these partnerships. One of the young persons is the master or mistress of ceremonies, and they do a wonderful job. And, of course, choir singing. So, there was a lot of participation, and we look forward to see what's going to happen with this joint relationship with Stark State College. And we have one or two students from Stark State College that are in the audience today, so we're grateful for their participation.
You can stand.
We also had an opportunity to be in Cleveland for interfaith briefing on lead-safe Cleveland, but also can say lead-safe Akron. One of the things I learned from that was that they're not sure if there's a correlation or not, but the topic that the president's going to be talking about down the road, and that's violence, and how lead poisoning in severe cases, there may be a correlation with that and the violence that we see in our children today. There's been some research about that, so we need to look at that to make sure our drinking water is safe for our children and not only at Akron Public Schools, but all of our homes from which our children come from. So, that's another area that we need to be concerned about. We talk about Flint, but when we look at Cleveland, Cleveland is worse than Flint. It's sort of gone under the radar, but of course, as goes Cleveland, Akron is not too far behind. So, that's another issue that we need to be concerned about. And then we had an opportunity with black elected officials to meet with James Hardy and another gentleman talking about economic development. How can we bring all of these wonderful changes that we're making with college and career and the other things that we're doing? How can we have that to impact our economic development, especially for those in the African-American community? To get them ready for the jobs that are here now and the jobs that will be in the future so that they can be economically sustainable, you know, jobs and wages to help those in our inner cities, particularly our minority and African-American persons? Because if parents don't have a sustainable, good-paying job that affects and has a trickle-down effect on our children, and our children's poverty, as we know, affects our children. Hunger, not having clothing, proper housing, then all of that dovetails into what happens in schools. Thank you.
Just piggyback on that, because I don't have anything to say. But as Reverend said, we were both at that meeting, and one of the things that was, I think, shocking for Brother Hardy and others, that the African-American community, how low it was and how the middle-class jobs were kind of spreading out, and they used to say, "The rich get richer and the poor get poorer," and that's starting to separate. And now we're seeing it here in Akron. So, that will have an impact, not on just the community, but our school system as well. So, it was interesting to listen to, I can't think of a gentleman from the Chamber of Commerce, new president or new executive for them, and he was really knowledgeable about what's going on, him and Mr. Hardy concerned about the Akron community.
Sorry. I ran into Reverend coming where I was leaving from when I was coming to the meeting and I already left. But it was really, one thing I like about the new president, he is all for diversity and inclusion. He refrained even from doing a portrait because he didn't have any diversity in his staff to really, you know, exhibit. So, he didn't want to project an image that he didn't want people to associate or affiliate with him. He said where he came from, they started at 5% and had gotten up to almost 40% diversity. So, he is about working on that, which is a great thing. Sometimes there needs to be a change agent that comes into the community that can facilitate something that maybe others were not able to for various reasons or anything like that. But he is certainly open to things that are going on in our community, and he's willing to work with everyone, you know? And he's expressed that, and it was really, really refreshing to see someone come into the community, a new person, a new face, and just really want to embrace where we're going with a lot of different initiatives. So, I thought that was very interesting. I've never experienced it right off the bat like that. And there was a lot of good conversation, and, you know, and I just left him, and I said, "You know, when it comes to dealing with African-American children, you're doing the right thing. You have the black elected officials there at the table. They can certainly contribute to things that, you know, in the direction that you're going." So, it's a good voice to be represented. So, and then James, it was good to see him there, too, so. Because I've always known James to be a very fair person. Working with him on a school board, he's always been very fair, and I have always appreciated him in that and highly respect him in regards to that. As far as the gala, it was different. It was out the box. I loved it, because I'm kind of out the box in a lot of ways. You can see by how I'm wearing it. But anyway, Jackie Sidus Butler, they modeled innovation in the process of how they presented that night. It was very different from anything we've ever experienced at a gala, and it was very refreshing. And I was like, "You go, girl," because that was something that, you know, I wouldn't think that she would have done something quite that way. But it was very nice, a very nice occasion, and a lot of people were there, a lot of educators, a lot of just community partners and organizations. A lot of our community partners were there, so that was great. Also, Stark State becoming the first sister university for Kenmore Garfield, so they got a first, even though they weren't the first one on board, University of Akron was. But they were the first to be partner, sister university to Kenmore and Garfield. So, that was exciting to see all that. We just have good partners. We have just good collaboration here in Sonoma County, and it's always wonderful to be a part of things that are going on here. One other thing, I attended a luncheon. It was a brunch, it was entitled Lending Heart, A Lending Heart. And what it consisted of was mothers. It was about maybe 10, 12, maybe even 15 mothers who have lost children to violence. And this is the second year that this organization has come together and do a, they wanted to encourage the mothers who had lost their children. Many of them were Akron Public School students at one point in time, not to say that they were currently attending the, I mean, Akron Public School, but they had touched, you know, our school system at some point. So, it was very interesting. And then one of the other things I noticed about the program, they had people there, like people from, like, Reef Recovery, Jobs and Family Services. There were different entities represented to try to assist the mothers in some of the areas that they may have a need. So, that was just my first time ever attending something like that. I really didn't know about it. So, I'm glad to know about it now, because I think it's a worthwhile organization and probably needs to be supported more in one way or another. I'm not sure how, and, you know, what to do about it right now, but it was very interesting, and I'm glad that somebody's out there trying to take care of our parents and of those who have lost children.
I'll be pretty brief. Patrick and Lisa, Leadership on Main was amazing. You both did a fantastic job. I think the entire room was so engaged in your conversations, and I really think you taught that room, who are leaders in Akron, a lot about what our district does, so thank you very much for that. I also got a chance to go to the Stark State and Akron U announcement of the Direct Connect Program, where you can actually dual enroll, and Stark State students can have access to University of Akron facilities. Really, really cool program. But I was also really glad to see that our district was part of that announcement. It feels like such a perfect plug-in for our kids, so that was really great. The Athena Awards also happened last weekend, and it was, first, one of our own was acknowledged. Shanna Carino, sorry if I'm missing her name, won for one of the Young Professional finalists of the award, but there also were other threads of Akron. Another winner was a grad, another winner was a mom of our kids, so it was a neat thread that connected all of those women leaders in the community. And my last thing, I thought tonight was my 20th board meeting. Not when I counted on only 17. But I did just want to briefly say, especially with you three here, too, I really wanted to come in and have a big impact, and I don't think I anticipated what an impact you all would have on me. And I just appreciate you so much, even the little things in my life have changed, like I'm reading different books by different authors, I'm having different conversations. But then the really big stuff and decision-making stuff, like putting the child before the student, thinking about real equity in all of our systems and not just equality, taught me so much in a very short period of time, so I just want to say thank you for that, even if it's just 17.
That first meeting counted for at least two.
We have a financial forecast that counts as five. That's really why Veronica's here.
So, quite a few things that I attended have already been mentioned, and they were all just as fantastic as they sound. Also wanted to give a shout-out to Patrick for the Leadership on Main presentation. I was just the steward. You were driving that ship, and you had more statistics for Akron Public Schools in your head than I've seen any of us come up with, especially at 7:30 in the morning. It was fantastic. Just a really great job, and he did send me flowers afterward, so, you know, my husband was a little jealous of that. But it was really classy, and thank you for that. Thank you for representing us all so well. Wanted to also talk about and give huge thanks to Ryan, Carla, and Ellen for Leadership Background Education Day was last Wednesday. I won't still thunder in case Mr. Miller wants to talk about that when he comes back, but just the preparation, the students, the schools we got to visit, it was, I couldn't have scripted it better. I couldn't have envisioned it better than what they were able to deliver for Class 35, so thank you for that. Couple personal things that I really got to enjoy. I went to the Fall Choir Concert at Firestone High School. Just an amazing evening, always well-done. I think Mr. Johnson had a million things going on in the school that day, and yet it made all the families feel like it was the only thing that mattered. And I did get, last Friday, to go to Mason to read to a kindergarten class. The lovely Title I, one of the Title I instructors there invited some of us to come and read. Again, I cannot overstate how if you feel drained for the day and you just need your soul fed, there is nothing better than getting to read to a kindergarten class and having them give you jazz fingers and applause. And, oh, I had a young lady teach me how to use a document reader, because I was holding up the book Old School, and she's like, "No, that's not how we do it. I'll show you." And she was five, and she put it right under the document reader and showed me how to use it, and that is the coolest thing ever, by the way. That is so much better. You don't have to worry about if the kid in front of you is sitting crisscross applesauce. You can just, everyone can see the pictures. And so, she got extra points for her class because she taught the board member something, so that was really great. So, again, if somebody calls and says, "Come read," first of all, take kindergarten. Second of all, wow, it just is incredible, so that's awesome. So that's awesome.
Age group and that's child molestation. They do an excellent job. They always have a good speaker. They have the executive director and I think Chief of Police for that was the speaker this time. And talked about his experiences with child molestation. And of course, the statistics overwhelming is not a stranger. It's somebody you know. It's a high percentage of someone that you know is the perpetrator of these acts. So we have to always listen to our children, believe them when they tell us that something is happening, and then respond appropriately. And then I want to thank Mrs. Mansfield for their wonderful work with Kim Mulgall Field Scholarship. And that was recognized when we had our Stark State College partnership with APS. Thank you.
All right. So tonight, I'm really excited with Ms. Mansfield to be able to announce the culmination of what has been nine months' worth of work by this board through the ad hoc Student Engagement Committee that I added to the roster earlier this year under the leadership of Mrs. Mansfield. Lisa and I have been discussing the topic of student engagement for some time. And after a trip to a conference where I think you attended at least one session, maybe more, and had some discussion on student engagement and how to engage the students in your district and pull them in. She was messaging me very excited about what she was learning and what she was finding out and wanting to bring that back to Akron. And so the Student Engagement Committee was created. And the purpose of the committee was to find or create a new way that we can engage students and bring their voice to this board as we make important decisions about the effect to them. And so I'm excited to say that in the very near future, we're going to be adding student representatives from across the district to this board. And I'm going to turn it over to Lisa, who's going to say a little bit more and introduce our students, who are then going to present on this very exciting development. So first, I do want to quickly thank the students that are here tonight for their time and their commitment in helping us put this together. Thank each of you. You've been phenomenal to work with. I want to say thank you to Superintendent James and to Assistant Superintendent Dr. Ellen McWilliam Woods, and also to Yvonne Culver and to Ruth Ryman for all of their work, even last minute changes today as we're scrambling around. And to Larry Johnson, who graciously has accepted sort of the role of helping us test the waters, so to speak. And for just helping us to take all of these sort of crazy and innovative and fun ideas. And to Ms. Mansfield for bringing it back and bringing something really fantastic back to Akron. And for all the staff to help us take these crazy ideas and turn them into a reality. So I'm going to turn it over to you and away we go.
So as you were speaking, it kind of reminds me of, this is the birth of this. This is not the end. We still have a lot of growing to do. We still have a lot of things that have to happen. So we're rolling it out tonight, but it's by no means completely complete. Let's just put it that way. But before I go any farther, and I'm not going to steal any thunder from our students that are here. So I will talk just briefly. We all met in a room at first when we started this out and it was all brought up sitting around the table talking to grownups. And I was home and I was kind of frustrated and I couldn't figure out, you know, I just, I felt like we weren't getting anywhere. I felt like it wasn't going to go anywhere. And I had a light bulb moment as I was going through my email. You know, we go through and we delete and we clean things up after stuff has been answered. And I realized that I had several emails that were from students. And I had several Facebook messages that were from students. And I had times that they'd come to board and I thought, why are we trying to engage students without students? It doesn't make much sense to, you know, give them something else. Let's create it together. So we reached out as a board to, I mean, committee, to some of the students that had reached out to us. So these were already students who had figured out how to engage with the board. They knew how to do it. They had found a way to get our attention, to be on a committee, to be, to serve in some way. So we reached out to those. And so three of them are here tonight and two that aren't. I want to mention their names as well. Tonight, we have presenting for, to us Brooke Jordan. She's a senior at STEM High School. We have Erin Brown, who's also a senior at STEM High School. We have Lourdes Montez, also known as Lulu. And she is a Firestone senior. And then also helping out were Cody Cross, who is a junior at Firestone, our CLC. And then we have Ariana Angelo. And she is actually a freshman and contacted the board as an eighth grader and has been an integral part of creating this and being on this committee. So with no further ado, I'd like Brooke and Erin and Lulu come up to present on the student representatives.
Good evening. Today, we will be presenting our proposals to create a student board for the Akron Public Schools Board of Education. Today, we'll be focusing in Focus Area Three of the Focus Area Model, where it talks about public engagement and specifically engagement. At the end of the day today, we want you all to walk away knowing that students do not want to be exposed to leadership opportunities and discussions, but be engaged. Be in the discussion, make their voices known. So we will be maximizing this in the community partnership through the Board of Education for opportunity to support student success.
Here's our mission. We want to engage students as leaders in the Akron Public Schools. We want to work with the Board of Education and to improve student engagement, provide leadership opportunities, craft responsible and inclusive policies, and achieve a better overall school experience for all students. Just as you can see, our diverse board members here. We think it's very important to have representatives, just as the high schools here in Akron. Our vision here is to have a community of responsible participating citizens and leaders advanced through perspective, skills, and enthusiasm of students.
So why is this important right now? Basically, like Erin said, we want to make sure that these students are engaged because there's a lot of people that have strong feelings about some of the political issues or some other social issues that have been going on in Akron.
Like Lisa said, Cody Cross, he is one of my close friends at Firestone. And he's one of the students who led the walkouts at Firestone. And as you know, that kind of spread it out throughout schools in Akron, like in STEM.
Now, Akron is going through this generational change with the college and career academies. One of our students, Ariana, reached out to the board, wondering, as an eighth grader, how does this impact me and how does this impact my future going forward? And what will my classmates in this long run? So at the end of the day, we want it to be known that it's important in Akron because as Akron has generation changes, I promise schools, STEM programming, and college and career academies, this has to be the next step. Akron has to be number one in everything it do, excluding student engagement. So how did we get here? Today, we are here because we went through four stages, which we call engagement, dream, build up, and inform. The engagement step is how we got here a couple of months ago, sitting at this table where you sit today, where a bunch of our diverse group who had contacted the board, met with the board, sat down, brilliant minds who wanted to just make a difference. They have passion for what they wanted and they have passion going forward. And then we ended up in the dream state. What do we want? How do we do this? How do we get other people involved? What makes us different from all the other student boards across the states? And so when we came down to figuring that out, we ended up in the build up. We went from asking questions to refocusing our path. Our path of discussing about what are the answers to developing three proposals. And at the end of the day, after conversing, we figured out the beautiful niches and everything that we wanted into a plan for what we are going to inform you today after we had them step one with instructional leaders, who will be the pivotal point in nominations and identifying those students. Now we're here to present why the Board of Education should be engaged with our students in this process.
So the partnership we want to have is the board members and student representatives. And it will be assigned together by cluster assignment. This includes STEM, AAA, along with all the other schools in the district. So we want the students to receive a board packet. That way that when they're here at the tables, they're not like, ah, what is going on? We want them to be informed and of course, they'll have to meet with their board members to discuss any questions they have and talk about the agenda.
So here's the basic schedule of the student board. So by August, they will attend a board orientation meeting. By September, they will be sworn in by the first meeting. And then mobile meetings such as like clusters, as Lulu had mentioned. East clusters, if they have something present, then they would go to East High School. So that kind of gets rid of that transportation issue that a lot of them have, which is suggested in the next point. They, if for some reason, they can't meet here, as we've done in the past, then we can use something like Google Hangouts or they can reach one-on-one with their other students or board representative that's assigned to them.
So one student representative will be selected on a rotational basis to attend each board meeting. Unfortunately, that isn't, we will have a vote, but we still have the honor to be discussing here on the table with you guys on change that we want to make within our own district. Students will be expected to attend at least one committee meeting for each committee throughout their term. And they also meet monthly prior to each board meeting to discuss agenda, like I said in the last PowerPoint slide. And it will be staffed from someone from APS on a rotational basis, whether it's a board member or a senior staff member.
Okay. So you may be wondering, how do we get the students here? Well, there's three steps to this process. And the first step starts with our amazing instructional leaders at each high school building, including Akron Alternatives Academy, STEM High School, and Akron Early College, which they will basically look at their ninth and 12th graders. Who has the passion to be here? The idea is these students are not your straight A students, but those are the students who have the passion. The students who are not inventors, but are problem solvers. So what we expect is these students are students who want to make difference, no matter what type of background they have. And so the principals, their leadership teams will look at their student population, pick out who always stands out to them, and give them the option to showcase what it means to be a student who is engaged rather than exposed. And so upon this, we get to the inform step where those students, after they've been elected, chosen by the leadership team, instructional leaders, board input, then they will be informed. There'll be one representative and two alternatives, depending on their schedule. And then the selection process, which refers to just the orientation, how will they get here, and how their term will be set up.
So here's the timeline and next steps. For, oh, sorry. They would, we would like the principals and other teachers to inform the student body of possible leadership positions. And then by November 1st through November 22nd, make applications available to the student body. And then nominate three students by November 30th, which is one participant and then two alternatives if the participant can't make up every meeting.
Another thing I want to point out is that we don't want this to be just a resume builder. This is something that kids are passionate about and want to make change. Along with that, throughout the January and April window, we want participating students to be sworn in the January board meeting. And the students will serve for the rest of the school year.
And as, right now, October through April is still the tentative schedule because we're just trying to get this off the ground and pilot it so we can come back and figure out what needs to be better. Around April 29th to May 17th, depending on your building, of course, STEM will probably do it a little earlier. But around that general time, it will start the principals where they will send out the application process, start picking students that way. Coming up in the future, they'll be able to be swear in and start their term the next school year.
So this is student interaction with the board. The board members, as we've mentioned before, will be assigned a student representatives or vice versa. So orientation in August, swearing in September. This slide is basically just a recap of everything we've been presenting throughout this presentation. And students hopefully will meet prior to the board meeting to discuss like anything else that they need to cover or practice with their board member or with their fellow classmates. And they are expected to attend at least one committee meeting throughout their term.
So we appreciate everything you have, of you listening to us. And we would be honored to have some questions.
Well, I just want to say, I mean, this is a great idea and everything. I mean, you guys have come up with some wonderful beginning suggestions and, I don't want to say, initiatives. So it shows that you've given thought to the process and what's going on and research. Because the state, you know, you can't, you're not allowed to have a vote. But you've done all this and I just want to say that maybe we can start the process without like swearing you in or something like that first to let you feel it, see it, experience it. I mean, to me, it's just like, kind of like, okay, let's just do it. Let's do it now. And that's fine. I love that. I love that you're, you know, you're ready to jump right in, dive right in. I just think it'd be a good idea for you guys to sit in these seats prior to being sworn in.
Ginger, these may or may not be the student representatives. So on the committee, working side by side with these students was myself and Lisa and Morgan. They may apply, just along with all of the other students. So there, as they pointed out, this November, starting November 1st through the 21st, there will actually be an application process. And they may or may not decide to apply for one of the positions themselves. And obviously, there are a couple of students from STEM. And so we'll kind of have to figure out how that works. But as I think Lisa pointed out and the students reiterated too, the goal of this, and it is kind of fast, is to get this set up to run it really from January through the end of the school year so that we can figure out what works and what doesn't and do that pilot piece first so that by next school year, presumably, we will have worked out some of the kinks and we'll have a full school year then to keep, kind of an iterative process.
I understand what you're saying. I'm just saying, can we do it without the swearing in part? That's all. I just think that.
Well, that's a ceremonial piece. That's not, that's not a...
My question is, as you have been talking amongst yourselves, what are you hearing from other young people like yourself about the interest of being on the board? What's out there? What are you hearing?
So for myself, and something that we talked about in the committee was, what are the jobs that the board does on a daily basis? And something that I did not know was the decision the school building makes versus what the board makes. And so a lot of my classmates really didn't know that either. So I think this opportunity where students are engaged with the board as a representative, provides that outlook into, I can be the one to explain, this is not why we have this at my building. This is because my building thought was the best option, not what the board thought was the best option. So...
Yeah, it's almost like that bridge. Because yeah, I honestly have so many, well, I have had so many questions where I'm like, where, who made this decision? And there's kind of these gray areas where I'm like, was it Mr. Johnson? Or was it here at the Board of Education? So I think just having a student representative to be kind of that kind of leadership there from their school. If there's so many questions up and if they have any concerns, they can go to their student representative.
And I'd kind of like to add as well, something that Erin said. We want, or we don't want people that have been, we want people that want to make a change. So one thing that's really hard to differentiate are whether our classmates are coming to us. Because you know, classmates, they already talk. Like you said, I mean, we already do hear a lot of things. But we need to differentiate between whether it's an actual issue, whether it's something that needs to be brought up to the board or whether it is just them talking about something that they're upset about.
You guys presented to all of the principals in our district and did an awesome job, equally awesome job tonight. But could you share a couple or even just one of the questions that the principals gave you and how you answered that? They did not throw punches.
Yes. So one of the questions that I remember was, what will be the commitment for students engaging with the board? And the commitment, as we outlined, was how they'll meet a few times during their term and once on one of the committees, like the financial committee. But then that made us think about what would be the board commitment. And so for the board commitment, the idea was, you will basically have a mentee. In Akron Public Schools is what we want in that third focus area of engagement. So having the board member be able to mentor one of the students in Akron creates that new profound generational change in education. So in terms of like commitment, the commitment is for the student that just attend and learn a thing and make their voice known. And then, Lulu, any questions?
Yeah, another question that I really thought was important was, a principal was like, hey, how do we do this application? A thing that we didn't really specify is that it's kind of up to the building principals because we kind of have different high schools that work different ways. So it'll be up to them to, you know, make an actual paper application or, you know, pick and choose from there.
So now, did the principals say they were going to have different applications for different schools or one application for all schools?
We'll give like the guidelines. That way, we have the kids that we're looking for. But yeah, it'll be a different application.
Because for my building compared to Lulu's building, when we said April 29th to May 17th, STEM kiddos are already out of school at that point. So we have to make sure that when we roll this out to the principals in a more formal application that they know that they have some flexibility in what they do because of their own school culture.
And we do have, and we did work with Dr. McWilliams and Yvonne Culver to develop like sort of basic minimum requirement. I think it was a Google form, actually, that, like a link that would go out to a Google form. And then you want to talk, you mentioned earlier, the diversity and inclusion. And I mean, these guys had a fantastic conversation.
They drove that.
And drove the discussion on diversity and inclusion. And that's the whole reason behind the principals selecting one person and two alternates is so that we can ensure that we don't end up with all females or all males or all white or all, you know, so that we can really make sure, as Lulu pointed out, that just like we have the diversity around the table already, that we make sure that we get a diverse representation of the student representatives from each of the schools. So that was really good. Sorry, Bruce.
No, I had another question. It's kind of slipped my mind. Oh, with, I guess this is kind of a tough question per se.
They like that question.
When you, when you're looking at your peers, say that you guys are looking at your peers, not the adults. Okay? And you have students at various levels, A student, B student, C, and so forth. When you're looking at the entire picture, are you guys looking at those students who are maybe lower but could be, have leadership abilities or capabilities? And the reason I just ask is because sometimes some of those kids do, but maybe they have some little, there's some underlying issues that kind of cause them to fall in that category. But if they didn't have an underlying, they might be at the top. I know you guys are at the top here. I can just tell that because you're, but you're good. You're good. I love it, love it. But I was just thinking, did you guys, did you guys thought about that? And maybe your team even think about, you know, looking for, you know, because there are some students that may not be in that A range or B, but they're, could be good leaders.
Well, I completely agree with that. I know especially at STEM, there's a lot of competitiveness. Like I know, I don't know, like there's a lot of people with really high expectations, really high grades. But then there's always like the people who even at a 3.0, which is a great GPA, like they, people send a stereotype and put them down below. But a lot of these people, even with lower GPAs, even, even sometimes with suspensions or detentions that they've had in the past, like I know that we need to be strict with our standards on how to get into this program. But they all have a lot of ideas. And a lot of the people that I find so much more engaged, and then I think someone had mentioned, they want this to not be just a resume filler, but something that means a lot to these students. They might not always be the people with the 4.0s, with the no... Yeah, yeah.
We talked about that extensively, right? We talked about, we don't want this to be the usual suspect, quote unquote. It doesn't have to be the senior class president. It doesn't have to be the president of student council. It may not even be the person who's got a spotless record. And that we want it to be that person who wants to be involved. And that's why the principals have a big piece in this, right? We want them to maybe pick that not usual suspect. And that diamond in the rough, so to speak, that you might not pick and get them engaged.
Oh, sorry.
But during our dream phase, that was like one of the biggest questions. It even reflects in our mission statement, where we talk about inclusive and inclusivity. Because one of my favorite questions from that principal meeting, even though we stated what we wanted, we still had a principal who asked, what type of students are you looking for? And my response to that was, any type of student. You have ninth through 12th graders. We want those 2.0s, we want those 4.0s. We want whoever show passion in just leading Akron Public Schools policymaking. Those students who really just want to see the success of Akron Public Schools and for it to innovate further. So any type of student that just wants to apply and just showcase why is what we want.
And I would just add real quick, this is an important challenge for our pilot. How do we make this equitable and fair and consistent while also getting the really broad spectrum of potential students? So I think that is a good categorization of pilot. This is a hard problem to crack. And thanks very much to you all for working on it and sort of piloting and not determining.
I think in the early stages, when I did attend the meeting, you mentioned that, you know, you don't normally get a chance to participate in things like this. So you've already experienced something different from the norm. So I, you know, I really appreciated that. And then you, you know, you're co-signing like, we want the 2.0s. You know, if they have an interest in making change and, and you know, the passion for the leadership role, then those are the people we're looking, looking for regardless to a lot of baggage that they may be carrying.
I don't want you to carry bags.
Right, 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 right. Right, right, right.
And maybe a heart for service, right? Because this is a service position, this is, yes, it's, but it's a service.
Yes.
It's not, you know, just to get a resume.
And I kind of like to add as well, that is something like the same students getting picked over and over and over again. Like, I know, I have other positions, like I think I'm vice president at my student council, like, people that have other things to do, they might not want to be picked as well for this situation because this is a huge commitment, as we were talking about before. That's why we have like three people that would run, because one person having to come to like all the meetings, having to do all the work, like that's a lot of work, especially if that person is already like in National Honor Society President or, yeah.
You all have done something that has never been done before. You stepped out in a real and powerful way. You've made an outstanding presentation, being assisted by so many persons. But when I stepped back there and asked, were you ready? All I saw was bright smile, with great enthusiasm. You were ready. And the reason why I asked, what was the buzz with the other students? Because we want them to be just as excited as you are. Because, just as you said, the commitment that you would have to make, we've made a tremendous amount of commitment, even if it's 17 meetings. It's a tremendous amount of commitment to the Akron community. And we want that same excitement and dedication because you're going to hear figures that, you know, what does all, how's that impact me? You know, what does that mean to me as a student? But we're trying to be student-driven, you know, this district. And you'll hear from the treasurer, everything that we do is depending on you. Not the bottom line with money, we have the money, but how it affects you as students. And you've demonstrated that we want to do the best we can to honor your, your commitment that you've done tonight on behalf of all the students of Akron Public Schools. So I applaud what you've done and congratulate you, where you've brought us this far. Thank you.
I want to thank you guys too, because this is really good, really engaging, because I like to engage with the students, just to bring this to us. And here I can tell, by just listening to you guys, I would, I would trust you guys to select any kid, any student. I would trust, you know what I'm saying, that for me, and I would trust you because I just, I could see it, feel it in you, and know that you would make the, select the right people, you know, regardless of what demographics they may be, or more aspects of life they may be in. So, thank you very, very much.
I love that you say that too, because I think you can probably tell if you're sitting here and you're listening to these three students talk about their time as part of the Student Engagement Committee. They, and I think Lisa would probably back me up here, I mean, they, they took this committee to a whole nother level. They really added something that we could not have brought to the table ourselves. It's been a few years since we've been in a classroom. But it's really been an amazing experience. I mean, the thought that you guys put into it, and all of you, you know, we keep the running notes, of course, so if you, you know, still would like to go and see the notes even from our most recent meeting, the changes, if you've got your own thoughts as we continue to pilot this program, add them to those shared documents, these students will see them, will see them. But it really has been a phenomenal experience. I think you've taught us as much as we have been able to share with you. And it's really, again, I think, brought the conversation to a whole new level. I do want to give Lisa a chance to wrap up or to say anything or to share anything or to summarize anything.
Well, it's going to come at us fast and furious, right? I mean, they kind of laid out the timeline. We really want to have representatives from every high school in the district by the January meetings to be able to get them started. Now, this is going to require some things from the board, it is going to require us changing procedurally when we assign our clusters. So we would move that, we would move that to the beginning of the, so it corresponds with the school year, so that you could start with your student and your cluster. We would still keep leadership elections in January. So, it's going to come fast and furious. But there's a reason for that. We want this half year, again, to be a pilot, to be a learning, to be a, you know, flying the plane while we're building it kind of experience, so that we can learn from that. So encouraging principals to look at what that's going to be and encouraging students to, if they have a heart to serve and a heart to lead, that they would want to be a part of this. And again, every school in the district, every high school, every CLC, every high school. So that's going to be an interesting experience. But we want it that way, we want everybody to be represented.
It's going to be a lot of fun. So, with that, I'm going to give you guys this Akron Public Schools prize. I know this is not the end of our together. I want you to know how much we appreciate.
Again, huge shout out to Larry Johnson for his help too.
And Bruce.
Want the board? David, just stand up right there. One, two, three. Very nice. I hope you'll help us with the spring.
That was good.
Oh, is it working?
We think it is.
Once I touch it.
One, one at a time.
All right. On that very positive note, we're going to turn back to the business of the board. With the approval of the meeting minutes for October 8th, 2018, your motion?
So, second.
The motion and the second. Any comments, questions, or discussions on the minutes?
Hearing none, more call please.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher.
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
Robert Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor.
Yes.
Superintendent's recommendation?
Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 26 personnel recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the personnel recommendations. Any comments, questions, or discussions on the personnel recommendations? Hearing none, more call please.
Mrs. Lasher.
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
Robert Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor.
Yeah.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
Next, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration one motion and three resolutions on the consent agenda. These recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second and a presentation by Mr. Pendleton on the five-year forecast.
Before we do that, just so that I don't forget, I just wanted to talk about briefly the donation of Bridgestone Americas and the other companies for the auto center at East, and also the donations from KeyBank for the finance center at East. I just didn't want that to not get said before.
I thought maybe you were going to try and prevent the five-year forecast.
No, but, you know, just in case, I mean.
Mr. President, sir, why Mr. Pendleton's doing that? I want to thank Superintendent and all who, cabinet who all was involved with drafting the resolution for our graduates, because I think that's very, very important. Thank you guys for doing that, because when we, we did a great job, Mr. Superintendent, these requirements for our kids, so they can graduate these pathways. And I think this is very good. There's other school districts across the state of Ohio who are doing it. And I think it'd be powerful once that gets down to Columbus to have more, the more support we have for the Ohio General Assembly will be the best for our students. So, we're looking out for our students, so thank you very, very much for that.
You're referring to the resolution?
Yes, the resolution, yeah. Oh, was that under the business? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Nope, you're good.
I'm way ahead, I'm way ahead on myself. Okay, I'm way ahead of myself then. Way ahead.
And they complete them.
All right, welcome to the five-year forecast. That is, the student engagement team is a tough act to follow. They actually set the stage for this perfectly. They talked a lot about innovation, and that's, coincidentally, that was the theme for tonight's forecast, was the impact of innovation. I do have to let you know about the purpose of the five-year forecast. We do file this every October and May, however, the law changed recently, passed the House and Senate here recently, came into law effective January 1st, that it is now going to be every November and May to allow boards of education and their communities to react to local policies. So I thought that was a good change. We got a call from the Department of Education, Superintendent, myself, to give some opinions about that law. So, away we go. Of course, our district focus is to be the number one urban in the United States. And the three focus areas from our strategic plan allows us to tell a financial story. And that financial storytelling really sets the stage about, a takeaway, a theme, if I could, for you, about how dollars are returned back to the classroom. And we've talked about that in the past, and now we're going to really start tracking that. And that's probably one of the major takeaways I think we've come to grow together. To, our student engagement team, they really did set this up pretty amazingly. Dream, build-up, inform. This is the first time in history that we've had students at the table. And so when we consult our past, I've got notes, literal notes in my office that I consult from time to time, they're 120 years old. And for them to be making their mark with this community and this board, it's pretty, and I'd like for them to know that. It's just really, I think, an important point as we move forward and we build off innovation. So, this slide is an exact replica of what we talked about in May. These were all the new financial initiatives that we released with. And sometimes, as folks look at these kind of initiatives, they say, well, this comes at a price tag, right? This comes at an expensive price tag. And tonight, we're going to reflect back on those decisions because a lot of those are, they're in the budget now, we have actual expenditures, so how are we doing? What's our, what's our grade card look like? So, tonight's goals. What is the financial impact of being innovative? So, you knew it was a coincidence, now they were talking about the innovation stage. What risks we have, there wouldn't be a forecast without a couple of risks that we outweighed. And what are the wins we can celebrate? I do have to throw in some numbers here, that's just part of this storytelling. The last May forecast, if you remember, this chart was actual numbers. And so, we consolidated this to just percentages. And this is our outline of revenue, the previous five years' average annual change, the five years, we're estimating with the five years cumulative average annual increase. The big takeaway here is highlighted in yellow, our average annual increase of revenue is growing at about 1.2%. It grew at 4.35% prior. If you'd want to think back, the prior five years, we had a couple large state budgets that gave us a lot of revenue. And if you notice, what we're predicting, and we're going to talk a little bit about tonight, that's our local real estate taxes. So, quarter of a percent versus state funding that had averaged about 3.67%. We're going to talk about that, I just want you to pick up a couple of highlights from that. Over 50% of our state funding comes from, of our local revenue comes from the state, and another 30% comes from our local property taxpayers. The same summary on expenditures, where the average annual growth for the next five years is 3.2%. So, what makes up the majority of this is salaries and benefits. That is every public school district in the state of Ohio, there's 611 of us, and that is no different. That is the same for everyone. They range anywhere from 70 to 85% of any school district's budget is personnel and benefits. Another takeaway here we're going to be talking about as a win in a little bit, is purchase service. Purchase service grew at 4.78% versus our expected next five years of 2.3%. This is the line item in which community school deduction comes out of. There's been major financial return to the district from fewer students choosing community and charter schools. We've done amazing work with our staff, all of our bargaining groups on benefits. And that benefits line items is among the lowest in our peers. The average annual growth rate of that benefits the prior five years was 2.8%. Even with a couple of those bad years, remember, we had double-digit growth on health insurance. So that's a pretty substantial number in terms of growth, definitely beating inflation. And remember, that $50 million health insurance spend can be, and has historically been in almost all public school districts and in Akron Public Schools, our fastest-growing line item. So that's a substantial impact that our staff, board, and administrative team have taken on, where we're just predicting a four and a half percent growth rate.
Can you just highlight again, the decrease in students going to charter schools? And what does that mean as relates to teachers, salaries, and those kinds of things?
We have a chart at the, nearing the end of the presentation, if it's okay, we'll cover it there. But we detailed that. The takeaway here in this summary screen, again, we have to show the numbers, is that we do have expenses growing at an average annual rate of 3.2%. When you compare that to the prior slide of revenue just growing a little over one, it's not a sustainable business model. So what do we do to address it? How have we addressed it? How have we proactively managed our footprint? And we had a request from Finance Committee to include these slides, just as a different perspective, to give you a sense of where those previous do. So this takes a look back to May of 2018. And again, if you highlight the star, that's where we were in May. This is October of 2018, modest changes. But if you do notice, we are moving that star or that point in time today, we're moving it out. We're moving it out because we're actively managing those expenses, returning it to the classroom. And those are all the decisions that are reflected, that are made here in this room. And this chart is a little busy, forgive me, but it shows the changes from May to October. And what it does is it symbolizes, we went back to that very first slide, where we talked about innovation just costs us a lot of money. Well, we've been able to have all those amazing innovations put into practice in Akron Public Schools, but at the same time, we've pushed out our deficit another year. That's actively managing the financial footprint. deficit and gone on to balance the budget. So generally speaking, districts don't have the ability to do that. So that is very active nimble management for an institution that's $500 million in Another chart you haven't seen, but just to give you, I know those numbers you can't read, but the revenue and expenses, revenues at top, expenses at their bottom. This is the comparison of last forecast to this forecast. The last forecast is in red, to this forecast is in blue, just to show you the very small changes and subtleties. If any, we've reduced expenses, as we talked about, in insurance and benefits, very modest change in purchase service. And so we're hitting our targets, even though we have these new programs. We do have to talk about a couple of risks. As I've mentioned a few times in the presentation, we have actively managed our footprint. And we really have taken seriously shifting dollars to instruction and started to track that. And nationally, there's a movement afoot called Academic Return on Investment. And we're starting to produce our own results of that. I promise school, college and career academies, those are investments in education that are already paying a lot, that we should be able to financially track. Operationally speaking, we do have a number of buildings, as been reported in the local media, that aren't covered by the Facilities Construction Commission. And so what does that mean? At the last board meeting, we talked about the permanent appropriations and about having to probably modify our permanent appropriations for the first time in five or six years mid-year. It is, it does symbolize a different change in the conversation, in the narrative that we have in terms of our finances. And you'll see what we're predicting in terms of a balanced budget, but we know we have a number of maybe roofs and boilers or other HVAC equipment to address. We have some athletic facilities, as well as some building concerns that are not covered by the state. I don't know, Superintendent, did I leave anything out or any others you think that you want to talk about?
Yeah, so, you know, in September with high temperatures, of course, we have several facilities that don't have air conditioning, Piper, Firestone Park, Miller South, and North High School, and the majority of the building. So those buildings, we had to close for a couple of days because of high heat. So something's, you know, we're going to have to deal with those on into the future. The other issue is, for instance, in the Bulto cluster, where there are two major housing developments that are going in, one at the old Perkins Building, which is being transferred to the city, and then another area off of Diagonal Road could impact our elementary schools with additional students. So we may have to look at changing our grade configuration in that cluster. That's something we'll be working with Cropper GIS to determine. So we might have to, you know, look at putting sixth grade at the high school along with seven and eight, so we can make room in the elementary buildings in that cluster for the potential for additional students. And then we have the issue on North Hill, where our population keeps increasing. So at some point, we may have to change some boundaries so we can get, create some space so we can accept more students at like a Finley, a Harris, and Forest Hill. So those are some of the things that, you know, I have some internal folks working on. And then we'll, at some point, have to have the board updated on that as we move forward. Those are issues that can impact our five-year forecast as well.
If we had to make some adjustment in the Bulto cluster, it's not unusual. We've done that with Firestone and that same campus. So it's not like this is something that's unusual. We have done it already.
Right. And that hasn't, you know, there's no, I haven't brought a recommendation to board. Those are some things that we'll have to study as we get additional information about the timing of housing developments in Akron. If you read the paper today, the vacant Harris property that we turned over to the city, they're going to be building homes on that one. So again, you know, in North Hill, that's even more potential for a population increase. So there are some adjustments we're going to have to do.
That is a perfect lead-in to another one of the risks we've identified for the district, and that's local property taxes. I'm going to shift to my forecast here.
You want to skip the students back so they can help you?
Yeah, really. This is a really busy chart, but it is important for you to see values and where a third of our revenue comes from. I just want to maximize this so you can get the whole effect. This goes back to 2008. This is our valuation. This is what sets mileage rates and collection rates and how we assess property taxes, how those collections come to us. And so what the numbers and the mechanics behind the five-year forecast are pretty sophisticated. So back to 2008, there's our residential property values, sitting at 2006 at over $2 billion. And what's not shown is this year. So in 2006, we had over $2 billion in residential property taxes. In fiscal 2019, we have 1.5 billion. And so we talk about previous levies that we've passed. Think about the collection on 2 million versus the 1.5 billion. And every year in the last three years, you predicted the deficit and you've moved that out. Without a doubt, I want to make sure it's very clear, without a doubt, without active management, you would have been on the ballot already, or you would have been, the ballot initiative would have been imminent at this point. So that's, we should, I think the taxpayer should reflect on that and say, okay, the board's been actively managing my taxpayer dollars and pushing that out as far as possible while still making investments in the classroom. If you look at commercial industrial dollars, those haven't declined as much. In fact, that is an area where we are predicting a little bit of growth. But the perfect lead-in to the superintendent's comments is we know that newer developments can assist this part of property values. And then total, if you can take a look at total valuation, where you look at commercial industrial, public utility, and you see where we are at over $3 billion in assets, and All right. Moving to the final part of the presentation, some bright spots. This data is from ODE, so this is what we get paid on. We receive our payments from the Department of Education twice a month. And they are counting two more N.C. kiddos than we did in 2018. Which is a little...
Which was two more than...
That's right.
Are you sure you're not just counting the same two students?
I am. I'm following those kids around the classroom a lot. But that trend is truly a bright spot for us. And two kids or not, that's a win. Now, this chart's going to be the next chart to Reverend Walker's point, is community school enrollment. Now, if you reconcile the two charts, the previous one and this one, it doesn't make sense. This data is also from ODE. This is what ODE is charging us, but 500 students fewer than last year. And students choosing to go elsewhere. That's also a win. It's a major win. As we take... So let's put some numbers to it. Sometimes the numbers don't always tell the story, so let's put staff to it. And to Reverend's point, in May, we had a cumulative savings or return back to the district of 5.3 million, about 2.5 mils, or 80 teaching salaries. And in October, now, we're at 8.2 million, over 3.5 mils, and 125 teaching salaries. And so that trend is definitely, definitely going to have a positive impact on our forecast. Now, the two, if you notice, don't seem to make sense. They don't reconcile yet to ODE. The trend will be positive, but we have 500 fewer students leaving to go elsewhere is what ODE is paying us on. October and November are big months, and we'll update you on those numbers. But we have two more kiddos in C. So those lines will adjust a little bit, but we are on the formula. So every student returned is either $6,000 not leaving us or back into our congress. So definitely the right financial picture. And finally, this is the five-year forecast in summary. This is where we can ask questions, we can go over. This is not the full schedule that you have at the back. This is, again, the third year in which we've predicted a deficit and we've modified our footprint, shifted operational dollars to instruction, and balanced the budget. And we anticipate that we'll be able to balance the budget, even with some of those mid-year capital improvements. If not, we're going to be reporting that in May. Next year, Superintendent and I, Finance Committee, Board, senior staff, we have a charge. It's becoming more difficult to balance the budget. We've spent a lot of time talking about capacity, capacity utilization, that a full building, a building about at 85% is a happy building. It's where we offer the most services in our building. It's the most efficient per pupil in how our spending relates to, and we have a full building. But we're going to have a more difficult time moving out into the forecast because we've been able to address that footprint. But we have a challenge. We have a charge. Obviously, an $11 million deficit, spending more than we're bringing in, that third year of the forecast is pretty substantial. And then, in our Finance Committee, we talked a lot about the cash reserve policy. In fiscal 2022, so the '21-'22 school year, we closed the school year at $27 million, which is below our cash reserve policy. So I will preempt the question, as we always get, about levy. So our financial picture is definitely stable and has been for a number of years. We've been actively managing that footprint, moving off the deficit spending to future years. We will need to talk about addressing that $11 million deficit. We, since we are at capacity, and capacity just doesn't mean buildings that aren't full, aren't full. They could be buildings that are at capacity at 100%. Some of which are in North Hill. So we need to address some capacity issues there. But it's not somewhere, as we go back to the original purpose of the five-year forecast, which is also to sign contracts and how we engage bargaining groups and labor organizations, that is a place here where we're going to have to be sensitive not to lock up the board beyond that date, as of today's financial picture. I will pause there. And I don't see anybody asleep yet. For any questions?
I think, you know, I just want to jump in before question, to just, I mean, to say thanks and to give kudos where it's deserved to the Superintendent, the Treasurer, and their staff for working so diligently with the board on this, because I'm reminded of several statements that we've made over the last couple of years. For example, one being that, you know, every district in the state is on a five-to-seven year cycle of levy renewals. And the longest we've gone as a district without one is the '70s, and we went nine years. And we're now looking at, you know, finishing year six or so, I think, without going back to the public for an additional levy request. I'm also reminded that, you know, when we were looking at the last couple of consolidations, particularly Kenmore Garfield, we had talked about the fact that over the last 15 years, our enrollment had declined by nearly 30%, but our building footprint had only declined by about 9%. And now, we've consolidated Kenmore Garfield, we're consolidating administration buildings, we've made additional closures. We're, you know, we're really retooling the way that we do business here at Akron Public Schools. But, and as you've pointed out, we've shifted that anticipated deficit spending, you know, we've moved that for three consecutive years. We've balanced the budget when we started the year, thinking that was going to be the year that we'll start the deficit spend. And here we are at another year where the deficit spend in fiscal year 20 is pretty small, but cumulatively, it's 59 million plus over the next couple of years in that forecast. But to your point, you know, how much longer can we continue to balance the budget? And I think you've made a good point of saying that, you know, we're reaching that point where, you know, even the deficit spend from '20 to '21 is pretty significant. And so it is time to just be thinking about what that looks like, because you can't, you can only do that for so long. And so I just, I want to say thanks. And it's a good overview of what we've done. So I, you know, I didn't have any questions. I asked you all of mine, so I'll open it up.
I was wondering if you could talk about the, like, state political world that's happening now too, and how you reconcile what's going on with the potential governor's race, the work you're doing down in Columbus on what our equation could look like for school funding. How do you reconcile that with this forecast?
At a real high level, since, what, 70% of the internal revenue comes from the state, it's a conservative estimate. It's 2.5% in terms of the state revenue that we'll receive. More intimate to that, obviously, Akron has always been engaged at state level, and now probably more than ever with the school funding work, with a bipartisan approach to school funding. What I'm most impressed about in terms of the conversation that's going around how to finance schools in Ohio is, for the first time, we are trying to cost out what it takes to educate a child today. And that's a really important question that has not been answered in a long time. And so what it looks like today could be, how much technology does a student need in their hands? Or what social, emotional, or security needs do they have? Because those are not accounted for in any state model that we've seen for a very long time. So I'm very hopeful. I am a realist when it comes to putting additional revenue dollars in the state's coffers at the expense of new taxes. I do not believe additional taxes will be bringing, which would be the single biggest way that schools, public schools, could get more dollars into their coffers. But I do believe we've met, I know individuals here, and I know the school funding work group that I'm a member of has met with both gubernatorial candidates, and education is a top priority. I believe education is the top priority. Obviously, they'll get to it differently. But I received a message yesterday that we have been asked by both camps to sit with them soon after the election in regards to the school funding work. So they know that's a priority. And so I'm hopeful for that.
I just have a comment on that. Would you just say it? I think that's very important. And this is an analogy. I would say when you're winning, you're getting everything. It's important... It's important that we're being asked to sit at the table. And by us being at the table and being able to ask the questions or give us some guidance and so forth, we'll be looked at as leaders and even kind of sometimes get a little bit more that you may need. So I think that's very important. I'm glad that we're sitting at the table because if you're not at the table, if there's some crumbs, you may not get anything. But if you're there, at least you can get something, you know? So I think that's good, and I want to encourage us to continue to do that and be active because it does make a big difference when it comes to decision-making.
Not really a question, but just kudos to, you know, I think just about all of us, maybe not Morgan since this meeting's 17, have sat here and watched that difference that it's made that folks aren't leaving, right? I mean, we can't do anything about trends as far as birth rates and things like that. If there aren't as many kids in the city, they can't choose us, right? But if they're not choosing our competitors, that's a huge difference. But so many of us have sat at this table and watched those staff happen, where it was those 80 teachers, or it was 109. I mean, I can still remember the numbers because we would walk out of this meeting and think about each and every one of those jobs we just had to vote to rip, right?
That was my husband.
There you go. So, I mean, we've been, we know the difference in what those numbers mean, that those are real people. And we felt every single one of those when we had to do them. And seeing that those amount of jobs were essentially not cut, we'll not say saved, because I guess you could say saved, by the work that has been done by you, by the Superintendent, by creating these innovations, by, you know, hopefully now, it really starts to turn. As far as I'm concerned, this is, we've been turning the Titanic, and it takes a little while. Boy, we didn't turn it slow, we've turned it quick. So with the College and Career Academies coming on board and the attention I Promise has gotten, and the hubs that are going to be in each of the buildings to handle those social, emotional needs across with our partnerships with the United Way, all I see is that number continuing to dwindle as to what goes out. And that's also going to make that difference. Maybe that, you know, between the right sizing and of enrollment and figuring out those pieces, which is going to be difficult, those aren't fun conversations to have with schools. People don't like when you mess with attendance boundaries, any more than they like when you close a school. They don't like that, and people don't like change. But if it helps move this so that we're not asking, and if keeping them in the schools does that, those are huge differences. And I know I can say I have never seen that property analysis where we see that drop and see how much it really is. Percentage means one thing, but seeing that it was $3 billion and now it's almost not quite half that is staggering as to what we can collect, what's even there to get. So thank you for showing it that way. It was really interesting.
I'm just going to say, you know, but the other thing that you highlighted too, I mean, we still have to develop a plan to either figure out how we're going to continue to balance it or get close to it, or start thinking about those decisions we need to make a couple of years from now. And then you brought up another good point, or both of you did, about the need. You know, this doesn't really include the buildings that you mentioned that are still not covered by the Facilities Commission, that this board has to figure out how to address with you. And that's not a small thing, so. So a stable outlook, but definitely one with some things to be thinking about with big price tags. Thank you.
With that, we do have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Are there any final comments, questions, concerns? Bring down the roll call, please.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
And finally, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 12 Business Affairs recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
So move. We have a motion and a second on the Business Affairs recommendations. Any comments, questions, or discussion?
Just kind of pointing out, and thanks, Dark State, in the situation for the sister college partnership with Kenmore Garfield. I know we mentioned that, and Mrs. Baylor talked about that really well earlier, but just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, or discussion? Bring down the roll call, please.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Thank you.
Superintendent, your report?
A couple of items. Speaking of partnerships with College and Career Academies, Tuesday, October 30th, from 2:00 to 3:00. Our doors open at 1:30 at East CLC. We'll be doing a ribbon cutting on the Firestone Complete Auto Care Center. That's part of the automotive program at East. That's a, we announced our partnership in the summer. And so, as you referenced, Mrs. Mansfield, the donations that are going to go into that will help open that, for that automotive center. The other one is, if you read yesterday's paper, there was a great article about a trip that some of our students, along with Kent City Schools, Barberdine, and Talmage, went to Detroit for the Henry Ford Museum trip and also the Ford Rouge plant. I think they make F-150 trucks. That was outreach from some local Ford suppliers. And I'd like to give credit really to Sue Lacy and Canexus who organized that trip. I heard a lot of good things for our first foray on something like that. But I think it really, for some of our students, gave them a whole new viewpoint on what advanced manufacturing really is. And so those are some things I believe that'll be a long-term relationship with Ford as we continue to work with Ford NGL. We're also hosting a meeting on October 29th at the Hilton Garden Inn. Ford NGL is coming to town, and we're presenting to some districts here in Summit County and outside of Summit County who are interested in looking at the Ford NGL model. And so we'll have more information about that. And then finally, on Wednesday, last Wednesday, October 17th, I attended my first meeting at the Federal Reserve Bank in Cleveland on the Community Advisory Council. And so some of the things you mentioned, Reverend Walker, regarding, you know, this inclusive economic development, were things that were talked about there at that meeting in a day-long orientation. A lot of the trends that they're looking at, it's showing certain populations haven't been sharing in some of the economic growth, just in terms of salaries, access to credit. Housing is becoming more of an issue because a lot of the developments, when you look at the rents, are market rate. And, you know, there are some folks have trouble with that. So those are some of the things that District Four, the Federal Reserve, is looking into. And those are things that they wanted to hear from the different folks on that Community Advisory Council. And so there will be more information on that that I'll be sharing with the board during the year. And that's it.
All right. Most of you mentioned earlier any events or items that I was going to include in my president's report. So let me keep it short, other than to say, we had a discussion following another incident of violence in our community last night that involved a couple of younger folks that were at some point connected or still are connected to Akron Public Schools. We had a conversation, I had a conversation with Reverend Walker. We're going to work together, along with the Superintendent, to find a more meaningful way for us to be leaders in the conversation around youth violence and violence in our community. We've had so many incidents this year that impact the children and families at Akron Public Schools, far too many than we should be even discussing. And I don't know how many of those things have to happen before we make sure that our voice is at the table talking about what we can do, or what we can offer, or how we can help. I just want to know how we can help and how we can help. And maybe that might be helping to be a leader or a thought leader in that discussion. So Reverend Walker and I have agreed that we're going to sit down and come up with some ideas and some people that we might need to reach out to as a board to figure out how to get involved in this conversation. It's imperative, I think, at this point, that we stand up and say something and do something for the children that are unfortunately falling victim to violence in our communities. So we'll, more to come on that, but I just want to mention that. Committee reports, legal contracts, and board policy. We do have some second readings that we're going to do tonight that will be reflected in the minutes but are not on the agenda. They were in your board packets, so you did get them about a week ago. But they're just not reflected on the agenda. So I'm going to turn that over to legal contracts and board policy.
Sure, and I'll just quickly read those Coliseum names that are up for second reading tonight. It's Policy 5610, Removal Suspension Expulsion and Permanent Exclusion of Students. Policy 5610.02, In School Discipline. Policy 5610.03, Emergency Removal of Students. Policy 5611, Due Process Rights. Policy 6423, Use of Credit Cards. Policy 7540.03, Student Technology, Acceptable Use and Safety. Policy 8403, School Resource Officer. And Policy 9141, Business Advisory Council.
Thank you. And again, that was the second reading for each of those. So those will come back to the board next time for a third and final reading of the bill. But I assume if anybody has any questions, you can contact Legal and Board Policy or attend your next committee meeting. Also, incidentally, if we didn't mention it before, the policy regarding those student representatives to the board, which again is in your shared documents on Google Drive. But also, if you haven't had a chance and you want to attend, those meetings will start with instructional and board policy?
As to legal, that's.
Yeah.
One of you.
And so we'll have the first reading, and start the policy out, and the second reading, and then it'll come back.
So there's still plenty of opportunity for anyone that wants to to weigh in. Financing, capital management?
No report.
Instructional policy and student achievement?
Well, I want to say thank you to Keith Letty for providing a tour for us with the I Promise School. So it was an insightful visit. I mean, some of the things we had seen on the first time we went when LeBron was in the building and we couldn't see everything, you know? So we were able to see some of those sights that we didn't get a chance to see. So, I mean, it's a wonderful experience, and what they're doing over there is just great. I really love the rooms where they provide clothing and shoes and things for the family members and the students. And they can go grocery shopping. Some of the things that are really geared towards a lot of our students' success and their parents, so.
And it's fun to see it while they're students in the building.
Right, right, it was, yes. So it was a good experience. Well, the other thing that's going on is the eighth grade showcase, which is coming up on Wednesday. And I know that Ms. Mansfield has mentioned many times she's attended before, and she's encouraged all board members to attend. It's a very insightful, wonderful event, and that is, the board members, she's encour, I mean, you're encouraged to go to the daytime parts from 8:30 to 3:00. And you'll actually see the students interacting at the stations. Or you can come later on, in the family hour. So that might be a good time to come because then you can meet some of the parents from 4:00 to 6:00. So that's also a good time. So students, 8:30 to 3:00, parents, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. This Dr.? Yeah, I'm there now?
Dream.
Dream. Oh, my gosh, I was like, what? It was freaking me out. I was looking at this, I'm like, what is this?
It's just pronounced dream.
Thank you for clarifying that because I was like, what the heck? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Sure, I'll talk about it. So Dream Day is, we've mentioned this before, that's October 30th. It should be on your calendar. Again, you don't have to go for the whole time, just try to stop in sometime between 9:30 and 1:00 to see what's going on. It's a conference-like setting for our seniors, so it's a good thing to go see. And then, as Superintendent mentioned, the trip to the Ford Company in Dearborn, Michigan, wanted to give a shout-out to Tess for the great article yesterday and the chance for our students to get out of the class and experience the work world firsthand. And we wanted to thank a few local companies that financially supported the trip. Some of those were OGS Industries, S&amp;A Industries, Steer Enterprises, Alspitzer Ford, and Claven Ford Lincoln Incorporated. They helped make that trip possible, so I wanted to make sure that they got mentioned.
Another thing I'd like to add with that trip, it's about exposure for our students. So the Career Academies is presenting that for our students. This trip also gave them opportunity to be exposed to some things and able to dream about, you know, actually attaining some of those jobs in the future. So it's just a wonderful time at Akron Public Schools, that's all I can say.
Any unfinished business? Under new business, we turn it over to Dr. James, Superintendent James, to talk about the extension. I'm still my thing, it's funny. Okay. NC, the extension of graduation requirement options.
Yeah, so as you recall, as Mr. Alexander referenced, last year, our seniors had some different options that the legislature had put into place to help with the kids who are at risk of not graduating because they couldn't get to the 18 points on the end-of-course exam. So there were some options that they were allowed to do, such as a capstone project, et cetera. Well, that option expired, and the legislature has not acted to extend those over the next three years as the new graduation requirements are implemented. Those were part of the committee that the state superintendent convened, that I was a member. Those have, you know, been passed by that committee onto the state board. But it's going to take three years to get those implemented. And in that intervening period, we will go back to the requirements as they were. So students would not have options, they would have to get those 18 points on the end-of-course exams. And just in the Ohio Eight alone, they're estimating that there's probably 10,000 students just among the Ohio Eight that won't graduate if we don't put these, if the legislature doesn't reinstate those alternative options for students. So the resolution, which has been passed by several of the, or all of the Ohio Eights, either considering them tonight or their previous board meeting, if it was last week, Ohio Eight's requesting at all of the districts and even the union organizations like AEA has already passed their resolution, or asking consideration to pass that resolution, asking for the extension on those requirements. And those will be forwarded by Ohio Eight to the leadership in the House and the Senate.
And one of the other reasons that Councilwoman Veronica Sims was here tonight is we've been talking back and forth, and City Council is also going to consider a resolution and support tonight. So great to have that connection with her as a former colleague and board member, but also to be able to help push that at Akron City Council, adding one more voice to the mix. And I think you had also said OASBO and organizations like that.
Right.
Okay.
And Representative Galansky, who is the educational representative for our district, had been pushing well harder. And my understanding, this is there, all it needs to have is a hearing.
Right.
And nobody wants to push for a hearing. So it's just like sitting there, waiting to be heard. And if it was to be heard, it would move forward, and the process would move forward. So hopefully.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
All right. And we do have need to recess into executive session tonight, so pursuant to Ohio revised code Section 121.22-G1 to consider the discipline of a public employer official of the school district in Ohio, revised code Section 121.22-G3 to consult with legal counsel to discuss disputes involving the Board and or the school district that have a subject pending or in a court action, requesting a motion to recess into executive session.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments, questions, discussions, final thoughts? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.